Good morning. Today is Friday, June 25th, 2021, and it's 7:30 in the morning. This is the Special Board of Education meeting for the East Royalty School District. I'm going to ask you all to join me in the question supply.
Can you open the door please? Is there anyone out there, any public person?
No. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with a reason and justice for all.
So this morning's meeting is to accept the letters of intent and resumes from those interested in filling the vacancy on the Board of Education. I remind folks that we announced we had a vacancy in May, mid-May of this year. That vacancy was created as a result of Mr. Segetti moving out of the district on May 1st. That was, the vacancy was known to the Board of Education after the time in which petitions were filed and an ability for the ballot to reflect, ballots were set for that May election. We discussed the process of what we could do in filling a vacancy at our last Board of Education meeting and unanimous statey Board of Education meeting decided rather than run a special election, we would appoint somebody. And we set June 23rd, Wednesday, as the deadline for receipt of letters and resumes. We did get 15 individuals that are interested in the board vacancy and filling that seat. I remind folks that the vacancy will fill for one year only. It is not the remainder of Mr. Segetti's term. It is one year until the next election, which would be next spring. We have an intent to enter executive session for the sole purpose of reviewing those letters and resumes today. And we will return from executive session just for the purpose of adjournment. Our intent, as we announce the process, was we received those resumes and those letters. We're going to review them today. Select candidates to interview, interviews will take place next Tuesday morning.
It's Tuesday evening.
I'm sorry, Tuesday evening, that's correct, Tuesday evening commencing at 5:30. Those interviews, our intent is to have those interviews conducted in executive session. We have always interviewed candidates for appointments in executive session to protect the privacy of those candidates. And we will, we will do that. And then we also have a special meeting anticipated for 7:30 on Wednesday. We do have 15 candidates, so you know, we'll announce what kind of interview we're going to do after that. We have received a number of candidates that have expressed interest in the position. I'm just going to read off their names so that folks know who the board is considering. Jennifer Marfia from Tucumpteeham 1 Avenue. John Roden from 237 Grover Road. Amy Reda Tajik from 366 Sycamore Street. Dennis Kresmian at 221 Beach Road. Paul Lowers from 19 Reed Hill. James Hogland from 842 East Fillmore. Douglas Crow from 1951 Davis Road. Adam Holtz from 452 North Street. Rachel Francis from 225 Sycamore. Melanie Bodecker from 312 Windsor Lane. Haley Mazza from 2109 Grover Road. Deborah Schmuelowicz from 2633 Blakely Road. Maria and Proda from 824 Main Street. Catherine Artemowicz from 127 The Meadow. And Bruce Mitchell from 206 Center Street. We also have received some letters urging the Board of Education to appoint particular individuals, different individuals from different letters we've received. I do note that two of the individuals have previously ran for school board. One, most recently, and, and, and obviously, I think we'll talk about what qualifications we're looking for, but certainly, somebody's running for the Board of Education seat is, you know, indicative of their commitment to the board and the community. And so, as are other qualifications that are listed in the resumes demonstrating folks' commitment. And that will be given due consideration. We intend to embark in a process when we interview that is consistent for all candidates. And so, I'm going to ask you all around the table about what qualifications you might be looking for. And then it would be the board's intent to craft some interview questions that would be consistent. The process would be consistent for everybody that is interviewed. Anything else? Right, I'm going to just sort of go around the room and sort of ask folks what their individual considerations are in terms of qualifications. What do you think the Board of Education in filling a vacancy for one year is, is most pressing?
Jessica. I would like to ask folks if they're interested in serving beyond the year. I would like to know their experience and thoughts on collaborating with a variety of stakeholders. And if you have opportunity, I think specifically, we've lost someone with a lot of financial background. So I'd like to ask folks what their experience is with finance and specifically related to municipalities or schools.
Terry. I will agree with Jessica about we lost someone who has a strong finance background. So I'm hoping that we can find someone that has also a strong background in finances. I also would like to hopefully find someone who is able to reach consensus with the, with the six other board members. Someone who understands the importance of confidentiality, as we're dealing with many personnel and many different students. And someone who are collaborative with, as a group of seven.
Judy. Thank you. I agree with everything that's been said so far. I would, I would add to that, the consensus piece of identity over the top of my line. But I also would be interested in someone that has been involved in the district that, that has attended board meetings because they were just interested in what was going on in the Board of Education and for the district. And have they committed to the district in some other way? Have they volunteered in some other way? Just be a couple of thoughts that I can interest in.
I would join, oh, I'm sorry. I would join with everything that has been said so far. I think an important aspect is also understanding what the role of a board member actually is. So someone who actually understands what a board member does. Because there are specific things that a board member does. And as has been emphasized, one of those really important things is understanding confidentiality and of the different issues that we do have to address as board members. And knowing that that can't be discussed at all, you know, outside of executive session. So those are very important things. And I also agree with Judy, just showing that, that involvement in our district and our community, as well as, as we've said, having that, that business background would be helpful. So those are some of the things that I would be looking for as we speak of the various candidate.
Mr. Rosen.
Thank you. The, the, I think knowing that this position is a temporary position and that it's a short-term position, we need to have someone who has a short learning curve. Someone who can come in and take on the role of board member and be a contributing member of this team right away without having to spend the normal amount of time, which, which for a new board member is, can be up to a year. You all have been new board members, it's a long time. It takes a while.
A lot of time. People are interested in running. It takes about three years.
Yeah, well, there you go. So it's, it's, you know, it's, it's a long-term commitment for, for most people. But in the case of appointing a temporary fill-in for, until the next election, it's, it's very important, I think, to find someone who can get, hit the ground running and become a contributing member of the, of the board. And I also would like to see a person who has broad interest in education and holistic learning and students. And not just someone with one specific agenda item that they're, that, that brings them to, to a board candidacy. So, so someone with broad interest in education and someone who can get the, can become contributing member quickly.
If I may, I would join with Dan, I meant to mention that about the learning curve. I think that's very critical. As we look at this position, it's a one-year position. There is a huge learning curve. We can all attest to that. And so that's very important as we move forward because we have a lot of different issues that we're going to be confronting going forward. So having that person with that background, I think, is really imperative as we move forward with, you know, being able to reduce the learning curve. So that's just, you know, obviously my take.
Absolutely. Thank you. Yes, I agree. The learning curve is huge. I also hope that every candidate understands the time commitment to being on the school board. In the last week, I think I got five or six meetings. So there's a huge time commitment. Some of them are in the morning, some of them are in the middle of the day, and some of them are in the evening. So as you look at the board calendar, yes, we meet certain times of the month, but there are so many other additional times that we meet because we are on so many other additional committees. So I think that's very important that everyone literally understands. It's not just once or twice a month we're meeting. We're meeting all the time.
But I think that's the, I'm just wanting to thank our district clerk who is retiring next Wednesday. Jack, I think you mentioned to me the other night that we held 31?
It'll be 31.
So 31 meetings that the Board of Education had as public meetings this year, between our regular board meetings and our special board meetings. We have had more meetings this year than we've ever had. And I, I would anticipate, given the issues that are facing the district just around the pandemic, that you can expect that going into next year, that same volume of meetings. Those 31 meetings don't include what Terry just discussed, which are all about committee meetings and that, that we, board members take part in, separate and apart from the public board meetings that we do. So you're right, there's a, there's a time.
And if I may, it's just, I think it's important for any of the candidates to understand that not only are you expected to participate and required to participate in our public meetings, but we do expect you to participate in these committees. And all of us are, I mean, I don't know, four or five committees per individual on this board we participate in. So those are all separate and apart. So you need to be able to have that time to be at those meetings. You can't, you know, say you're going to be on the committee but then not be in attendance. Obviously, there's certain situations that won't rise. But in general, the expectation is that you will be attending your committee meetings.
And that goes immediately to the suggestion of looking for someone with financial background. I'll tell you why. Because the Finance Committee, of which I'm a member, I will be the only board member left on the Finance Committee because both board members that are leaving the board were on the Finance Committee. Mr. Segetti and Mrs. Cogburn. So, so we need more than one board member on the Finance Committee, it seems to me. And having someone with a financial background jump right in and give us good advice with regard to the taxpayers' money and, and the three-year plan for moving forward for budgeting is, is critical. So I appreciate the fact several of you mentioned that, that need.
So I, I don't know how much of our discussion is able to be heard on the recording with you folks en masse, but I'm just going to sort of summarize what folks have said in terms of the qualifications that the board is looking for. And I don't think it was a qualification, it was just an interest as to whether or not somebody's willing to, you know, intending to serve beyond three years. Somebody who has experience in collaboration, not just with other stakeholders in the district, but also in operating as a group of seven. I think I would add to that, just personally because I haven't said what I would be looking for, would be that not just collaboration, but there are many times that a Board of Education differ at the table. And, and that's invited. Difference of opinion is invited and expected and we welcome that. And, and I've always found that to be a very important part of the process. But once the board collectively makes a decision, that the board as a whole unanimously needs to move forward and be supportive of that decision. We don't operate as individuals, we operate as a collective board, and no decision is made without it being a collective board decision. And so I'm looking for somebody that sort of expresses an understanding of that. You can come to the table with a difference of opinion. But once the board makes that decision, whatever that, whatever that issue is, that they move forward and accept the final board decision. Somebody who's familiar with finances in municipalities or schools. Somebody who can reach consensus or move towards consensus. And I, I sort of would add to that in terms of reaching consensus, that it's somebody that is open to change their mind, is open to recognize the opinions of others and maybe change. We certainly have seen that over the years in my years of service on the board, that as you have that discussion and there are differences of opinion, we, we think differently sometimes. And I would like, welcome somebody like that. But somebody who understands the need for confidentiality. I will add that as a, as a board, we have a policy in the beginning that there's only, you know, certain members of the Board of Education that can speak to the community about a particular issue. We don't do public press releases, we don't do comments to the press. It's left to either the board president or the superintendent to make those comments. But somebody's not going to be out speaking as though, you know, we always say we direct community members back to the administration, we direct communities members back to their school principals, that when there are issues arising, they cannot act as though they're running the school and they're operating the school. It goes back to those who actually do that. So those are things we would.
Well, that's part of that learning curve.
Yeah, right, yeah. Somebody who's been involved in the district, attended board meetings perhaps, or has shown some other commitment to the district in another way, whether that be committee service or, or, or different other involvement in the district or community in some other way. And I think to, you know, I think we can't discount folks whose children or may not have children currently in the district, but also our taxpayers and have done community involvement in other ways. There's no requirement that a Board of Education member have children in the district. To be clear on that. Again, understanding the role of board confidentiality, understanding that this is a temporary, short appointment, needing that learning curve, that they can take on the whole role of board member right away. A broad interest in education and not issue-oriented, not, you know, I want to get on Board of Education to address a particular issue. I think that covers, and understanding the time commitment. I think you've all captured those qualifications well. I think that that's what we need to be looking for. It's our intent, I think, at this point to enter, unless anybody had anything further. I would entertain a motion to enter executive session to discuss the, well, the, the, the resumes and the letters and, and select candidates. Do we want to call them list it all before we do that? Do we want to, are we, are we good with the list of candidates? In other words, are we interviewing all 15 candidates?
All of those questions. I'm just as Heather thought, I was thinking some of those things seem to be almost educational points that we could make to each candidate, and I put it in a checkbox. Do you understand this position requires these things? And they can make a, I think some of it could be summarized or compete on confidentiality. I think everyone will probably tell us they can hold confidence, although we may need to debate. But that's the thing, the time commitment, I think, is a bit of a yes/no question. That should be more retained. So I would just maybe come up with one little anomaly, the thing that we would let each candidate know before we ask our limited, limited questions.
I think that could be done in a summary form. You know, here you've expressed an interest, we want you to know upfront. Here's the expectations of a board member with respect to time commitment, with respect to confidentiality, with respect to.
Very well.
Everybody else on that list, you know, and a preliminary question. I don't want to sort of cue in what folks are going to be asked, but might be, do you have any comments about your experience with respect to any of those issues? There we go, right? And that you could cover some of those broad sweeping, this is like the expectations are.
I think it wouldn't hurt for us to talk before we go into executive session a little bit about the process of the interview. They, you know, several people have said, are we going to interview 15 people or, or? And how we might be able to do that? And also, how we can manage the questions. It seems to me that my suggestion would be that one person ask the questions. And the same questions be asked of each candidate. In other words, I would, I would trust the board president, for instance, to lead the interview and to, and to pose the, the interview questions, to construct interview questions based upon what we just discussed. To evoke from the interviewee their qualities that they would like us to consider. And, and organize those two or three questions that we would ask each candidate so that it's done in a uniform manner from one candidate to the next. And each one is given the same, the same consideration, same opportunity to respond to a particular question, the same amount of time for the interview. And, and so that, so that it's a fair treatment of all candidates. And frankly, I would suggest that we interview everyone who has expressed an interest simply because I think the, the fact that they've come forward and said they're interested shouldn't say to us that it's worth hearing directly from them a little more about their candidacy.
I have no objection to interviewing everybody because I think we get the added advantage. We have a lot of committees that we need folks to serve. And I think that it's important to see the names on this list, many of whom we, we, we all had communications with over the years. But, but some might be new. And I think it's important to find bases for those who wish to serve that might not be appointed to the board vacancy. But there are certainly other places in the district where we could use some, some, some folks like these candidates.
Well, how does the rest of the board feel about the notion of interviewing 15 people? That's a lot of people.
It's a lot of people, but I think we owe the folks a big amount of time through pressure. It's just I think we owe them the time. It should be limited. It will be brief interview.
Right.
We won't ever get through them all.
Yes.
Are we going to set like an amount of time? I have no objection to doing this at all, but I'm just wondering if you want to have the outset, set a time limit and say, whatever it is, if it's 10 minutes or 15 minutes, just so that the interviewees as well as us, we know how long, you know, we're going to take for each. Even if they're the same question.
Well, obviously, it wouldn't be fair to, to have lengthy interviews because by the time we got to the 15th person, we'd be zombies. So the, the, so we ought to consider whether we could do it all in one night.
I don't think we probably can't. So I think the expectation though is we could do, you know, a bulk of them on the Tuesday evening meeting. We're starting at 5:30. And I don't think the meetings need to be long. We have the resumes, we can craft some questions that are going to sort of grab the qualifications we're looking for. And, and maybe it's 15 minutes a slot. And then, and then the remainder, the remainder that we couldn't fit in on Tuesday evening could take place at that Wednesday morning meeting. I agree with that.
I agree.
I agree with that. So we do 10 Tuesday nights and then the last 5 Wednesday morning? Let's grow up, let's do a calendar. I think we could probably do, we might be able to do, maybe do 12. Because that's nine. I'm getting a scowl from our.
Zero, 10, 12.
I think we would say, you know, do an hour, take a break, do an hour.
I would maybe, maybe three per hour, 20 minutes each person transition time. People will be coming in, so we just need to have something here.
Would be done at 9:30. If we did three an hour, then did 12.
Which is, yeah.
That would work.
Yeah. I'm a little. I, I feel like we, we should really do more in the, I feel like folks' availability might be more in the evening and less in the morning. And, and so I, you know, I think we have some folks that maybe, you know, could accommodate a morning schedule. And I would ask, when we, when we set up interviews, that we try to fill the morning first. Yeah, you know what I mean? So that, so that, so that anyone who's available to do a morning meeting, or at least ask them. You know, I know what your preference is, but are you available to do a morning meeting? Because if folks aren't available for a morning meeting, then they would need to, need to go into that Tuesday evening.
Well, like board members too, we can't have a lengthy meeting that, or the board members have other commitments during the course of the day. So, so I think what you guys would.
Would we, would we reach out to them in the order they submitted their layer of events?
We'd probably get a short call right in the list.
Okay, you'll go down the list and then.
Put them in a slot. And, and ask, we'll, we'll ask if they can come in morning. So would you like the first one scheduled? So think about, some of them are parents and trying to go all morning. So like some, for some, 7:30 would be great because then they could come in and then go to work. For others, they're home with their children, so maybe 8 o'clock or 8:30 might be better for that. So we might be able to fill that in on the first hour and a half in the morning. And then we'll see, we'll see what's the evening. I agree with you, most people are probably available. And they knew that 5:30 was posted, so they're prepared for that part of it. So would they, or three or four, or even four?
And if we have, yeah. If we have anyone who is not available for whatever reason, if they're out of town, are we doing phone interviews with anyone who is?
You mean is not available on either day?
Yeah, if someone just happens to be.
Or just can't fit the slots that are left. Because I agree, we should do it in the order in which we receive interest. You know, that's fair, you know, and you fill in the slots as, as they're being contacted. And, and yes, the person's at the end of the list, may say, gee, I can't do it. I have to be in next place. The, yeah, maybe they could phone in from wherever next place is that they have to be and give us 15 minutes on the phone so that we can ask them the same questions.
I kind of feel like we should be meeting them in. Right.
Oh, I want to, but what if they say they, they still want to be considered, but they can't come?
Well, they all know that 5:30 on Tuesday, so.
I mean, if we have to stay a little bit later on Tuesday to accommodate my person. I feel like we should do that as opposed to do a phone interview.
Sounds great.
I would rather do that to make sure that we have people in person because everybody did know that Tuesday was going to be the day that we didn't. And, and just as an aside, this is sort of, as we talked about this, these new candidates, this is what you're going to confront as a board member. Because you have morning meetings. A lot of people don't realize that we have many 7:30 in the morning, like so many 7:30 meetings. You need to understand, well, no, but I mean, truly, right. Like in our evening meetings, if you haven't attended board meetings, we have very long, they start at 6 o'clock. I think our last one ended 10:30 or 11:00. Like you need to understand that that is what is involved in this time commitment. Separate from our, so just as, it's just as we talk about this, it brings to minds.
To Kim's point, I'm supposed to go on vacation on Monday, and I'm delaying vacation for three days for board commitments. And again, I think it's important, as you said, for everybody to know that your life, when you become a board member, there are.
You're a board member first.
Yeah, I mean, you literally have, I mean, we all have done that. We have changed our schedules, our personal life because we are, this is such a commitment and it's important for the next.
We had a board member years ago who ran for the board and, and who thought it was kind of an honorary position, you know, to be on the Board of Education. And then, less than a year later resigned from the board because of the time commitment, which he had not anticipated. So I, I think that's a legitimate point.
All right, Amy Carter. I think we have some qualifications.
I think we have some qualifications to look at. All right, may I have a motion to enter executive session to discuss matters related to the appointment of a particular person? By Judy, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bronson.
Just a comment that, you know, all we intend to do is read the resumes and the letters in executive session so that we have a preliminary knowledge of each of these candidates.
And then, Jackie, you will contact our folks that are interested and set up interviews for us.
Thank you.
Right to the wire, we're going to eke out every ounce of you we can.
That's the reason I gave you that call. Yeah, I was going to say, Jackie just commented, if she doesn't hear back in a timely fashion, how does that, is she just going to notify the board instead of that?
Okay, all right, thank you. Availability is obviously important.
Response.
And we're okay with leaving the selection of the two or three questions that we're going to ask in that fifteen, twenty minutes to the board president? And are we also okay with one board member, the president, I would suggest, asking the questions? I think if we try to go around the room and have a lot of involvement in the other board members, it's going to take a lot more than fifteen minutes to do these.
And I will, I will circulate my questions so that, as the board will be aware of what they are, if there's some feedback you want to change, you know, I'm happy to do that. I don't want there to be an impression that, want folks to know that that's just to provide consistency to the process, not because the board has some greater role.
Well, and to make it work, and I'll get these fifteen interviews.
We got to provide consistency and some expeditiousness.
I, Judy, I have a follow-up question, and I would almost look at this as like the advert type of questions, like you get what you get, and if you don't get, I don't think we'll, it will make the interviews different if we get into conversation beyond the questions, and then we'll give unveragances to those who give more time. I think we need to be very consistent. I'm almost right, and I think we've provided our feedback, but I think if we haven't got all of our points in, Mary Beth, I think we should do that now, and I think we're listening and absorbing information and then kind of personally.
To keep the process moving, that's executive, we keep that decision a lot of the time. We've all been at interviews, you know, how that can go, you know, some people elaborate more than others. So, you know, it's going to be like two, three questions that you really ask, and I think that makes a lot of sense, one person asking, just again, to be, to keep the process moving forward, just consistency sake. And again, I think, like you're saying, there probably won't be a lot of time for dialogue, so if we have a chance to respond, you know, and please give us your best response.
I think it's important.
I think it's important that we keep it very equitable.
I agree.
And I think it's important to reiterate that board intends, after these interviews are completed, to choose a final candidate and to appoint that individual to the Board of Education so that they can take their ultimatum office on the reorganizational meeting along with our other new board members. So we're not going to drag this process out, we're going to make a decision, and we will appoint that individual as soon as possible.
And when we meet on Tuesday for these interviews, it is just going to be the six of us, correct? Brian, question one-ten, it is not going to be involved, it's just the six of us.
Right, it's a board, it's a board, right, but I'm not sure if the super chair has no involvement in the selection of candidates.
So we have a motion to enter executive session.
We do have a motion, is there anything further? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Terry, six-zero. Enter an executive session.
Good morning, everyone, this is the Special Board of Education meeting for Friday, Friday, June 25th, 2021. The board is returning from executive session where we discuss the matters related to the appointment of a particular person. We are just returning for public session for purposes of adjournment. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
No.
Move by Jessica, second.
Second.
Second by Terry Olwiler. Discussion, all of the things, you can say aye.
Aye.
Terry, six-zero. Thank you all, good morning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you Tuesday night.